Start the committee to hold. First thing I'd like to look at is proposed ordinance number one.
Can I speak on this?
And you want to hold this?
Yeah, yeah, we'll just hold on this. I do have the other ones to be introduced. And if those ones can't be introduced, we would just amend this.
Proposed ordinance number two. Non-property tax item to be determined.
Same thing, we'll hold.
You're going to hold that, you plan on holding that one, right? It looks like the way it's going to hold, we're going to hold them all and you're going to pull them out.
Yeah, we have the other ones that are introduced that people, it's now available to the public to look at, but we'll introduce those tomorrow.
Okay, next one would be proposed ordinance number three, non-property tax item to be determined. And we plan on holding that too, right?
Correct.
You have an amendment to this, you have amendments to this?
Yes, there's amendments for it.
You have an amended ordinance on this?
Yes, we have new ones.
There is no be determined.
Correct, it won't be the to be determined at all.
As long as they know that, okay.
Yep.
Okay, next one is proposal ordinance number four, licenses and permits.
Yeah, I was personally all set with this one as looking at the three-year averages of hitting over $700,000 in some years, looking to add an extra $100,000, so $600,000 is more on par with what we've seen.
All right, you plan on pulling this out tomorrow, right?
I believe that.
Or Wednesday.
So, I think that we need a munis printout because you'll see that the permits for, this year are about $320,000 short of the $700,000 estimate that this budget year was supposed to maintain. Increasing it by another $100,000 is going to bring it about another $220,000 short if we don't meet that budget criteria for this year. I don't know what else to say about that. You're already running a deficit on these lines, so this is something that just, it can't be supported. Otherwise, you're just going to keep running deficits on the same lines. So, I don't know what else, where you're getting that three-year average. But last year, it's still short about $320,000.
This year.
This year, obviously not this fiscal budget year coming, in the '24, '25, the '23, '24, it's about $320,000 short. Increasing it by another $100,000, according to this year's estimate, is going to run it short about another $220,000. So, that's all I got to say about that.
Mark, anything? Lenys, anything on this? Number four, Frank? Counselor Burtard?
No.
No, good.
Are you voting on this tonight, that one?
We're not going to vote on anything tonight. I'm going to vote on these things on the 20th.
Okay, okay.
All right, next one is number five, proposal ordinance number five, departmental income to be determined, vacant property registry from zero to 150,000.
This is another one I'm looking to hold, so we replace it with a correct amendment tomorrow.
Okay, never hold that one.
Do you have an amendment to this?
Yes, it will be to be.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have, just one question. I don't know if maybe we can get a, an explanation from the actual codes department, but this legislation's been implemented for well over a year now, and I don't think that we've received any income so far from the legislation. So, just for some clarification of how we're going to start gaining revenue on something that we haven't gained revenue on that's been instituted for close to a year now.
Can we, can we make sure on Wednesday we have the codes department down this, if there's any issue there?
We have another meeting tomorrow, so hopefully.
We got a meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, right, tomorrow, thank you. All right, next one is, anyone else?
Is there a number for this, from this, this year's budget? Because who, I don't know who, everybody's name's on it, so I'm just kind of asking.
They haven't started it yet, but the codes officers were looking into it already now, and.
So, something that's been a year already that we haven't implemented or received any money on, we're going to bank on taking.
Yeah, because once we start, then there's like at least $100,000 up for grabs for the taxpayer, so we thought it was a good idea.
Is there, because I'm pretty sure when we passed the legislation, the reason that it couldn't have been implemented is because they didn't pass the law the way it was supposed to be written.
No, no.
Because I don't even think that there was somebody in the codes department that could actually.
Let's wait until he comes in.
Like I said, it's been over a year since it's been.
I know that. Mark? Lenys? Frank? Next one is proposed ordinance number 10, budget salaries.
That's nine.
Did I miss one?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Number nine, oh, okay, mayor contracted services from 18:05 to 13:05.
No, I guess. The mayor's office, they haven't received anything.
Okay. Lenys, Bob, Frank, Joe, okay, Bob, good.
What is the explanation? Does the mayor's office have any comment on the?
It's up to the mayor.
$13,500?
What was that?
For the contracted services? What is that for?
Yeah, well, he talked about it at the last.
Oh, is that for, that's for NICOM?
Well, it's the NICOM and any other trainings and.
Okay.
Okay, next one is proposed ordinance number 10, salaries from $90,000 to $100,000, $10,000 change.
Well, I think that the memo that you got from the county stated that they haven't taken over any purchasing department or purchasing in general from the city, so I'm not sure how we're going to add $10,000 to somebody's salary when we're eliminating a department in those next three budget amendments that you still need a purchasing department for the simple fact that the county hasn't taken over the purchasing department. So, that was in your rationale for the next three budget amendments for purchasing, so I think that that accounts for pieces 10 through 17. So, I still haven't received any change from the county stating that they're going to take over the purchasing department, so I'm not quite sure where that is going to entail of.
Mr. President?
Somebody being able to take that over?
The purchasing department's in the table of organization. So, it's in the budget, it's a table of organization, and Mr. Brown and I both agree that we recognize table of organization. The purchasing department has been eliminated, it's still part of the budget, it's got a number, and it's part of the budget, and it can be acted on. Go ahead, next.
I guess based on that recommendation, my suggestion would be to discharge pieces 10 through 17 for the simple fact that the council, number one, doesn't have the authority, and number two, we never take that over.
If I can.
Well, just to state that, we didn't get rid of the line, we reduced it from 90 to, from to 100.
I would get rid of mine.
Well, that's you increase the budget, the responsibility for the budget director.
And the salary, yeah, the salary cannot be zero, because if you move to zero, then you're reducing the, so that has to be fixed.
I don't recommend any zeros.
Right.
Judge, let me ask you a question, I guess, and that kind of goes back to, when you're reducing these lines, essentially you're eliminating that position, because let's be realistic here, nobody's going to fund a position at a dollar or $10 and become the budget director or the purchasing department in the city of Utica. So, where does it become applicable to amount of salary amount that you can reduce it to, that you're technically not eliminating their position?
There's an area of two options, he can either not fill the jobs if there isn't enough money, or he can veto the message, and one or the other. And I just made an agreement with Mr. Brown that I am going to respect the table of organization because table of organization is part of the government, and anything the board creates is part of the budget, and it has to be recognized, jobs and positions are determined by the board's proportion. The charter allows you to take those apartments and decrease or increase them. You can, the table of organization is part of the structure of the government of Utica. If it's in the budget, it exists, just like there never has been in the last five to 10 years, maybe longer, a public safety commissioner. It's in the budget, and it's also in the table of organization, it's in the statute as a matter of fact, it's a statutory job. If you, you don't eliminate the table of organization, now, you could say that that job you think should be part-time, refine and reduce the salary to that level for that rationale, perfectly okay. But the table of organization stays, that job stays there, and you don't eliminate it, yes?
No, and I'll just add one thing, I believe, Judge, I don't know if Charlie spoke to you about this, but I believe there's a conflict of interest having both the budget director and the purchasing department be one and the same. I believe the budget director's purpose is to audit the purchasing department, so I think that there's a conflict of interest having.
I, that, if it's in, if that's what the table of organization says, that's where he is, I don't, that's part of, you know, I respect what you have to say, Mr. Giorgio, and it's something for them to take into consideration. I told them that I would tell them how I feel about these matters when I have all nine councilmen present, not individually, because then they can discuss them, and they're also in the presence of you, or somebody from your office. And I don't pretend that I'm always right, you see, I just have a point of view, and I respect any point of view. But I did promise.
So, we're discharging these?
If I can add something.
Are we discharging them?
There's, I want to make one more.
Recognize the department of, the budget, the table of organization. If they're in the budget, they can be decreased or diminished depending upon budget, but you don't eliminate them.
Right, so, okay, so what he's saying is that you would have to change the salary line to an actual amount and not zero.
I understand that.
Zero would reduce that to, it would be.
Completely understand that. The other option I do want to address is if we don't, if we did decide to completely discharge all the purchasing parts, and we just say, yes, we are going to hire somebody for that, there is a concern I have then with the budget salary as is. I know we were in a meeting with the mayor, and at first I was kind of stunned to see $90,000 for budget salary, seeing that our last budget director, who had years of experience, she was at $84,000. We asked if that was the correct amount, the conversation was, no, the salary's going to be more $70,000 to $75,000, so I do want to just get clarity on that either today or tomorrow, and.
What's the chief of staff say?
Yeah, do we have the actual, like, the end-all salary number of that?
Can I, can I just say that, so he, no, I know, can you mind if I answer that briefly? Mark, thank you. So, the budget director has been hired under the assumption that that would be the salary, because that was budgeted for. That's, that's number one.
No, he didn't say it wasn't for 90,000.
Number one, he said that there's a budget director hired.
But for how, what is their salary is what I'm asking.
With that said, there was a budget director that was hired. Number two, your rationale of eliminating due to county agreement and combining duties with budget director also has to be eliminated, because your rationale no longer fits your narrative to eliminate that position for the budget director and combine those two positions. So these are, again, some things that should have been discussed, number one, with law, and I think that you're getting your recommendation from your council, and.
Okay, but.
The law department, who, can I finish? Because now we're buttoning to me. I might have to pull out the century, I might not like it. But I think that it really comes down to the fact that we also have a responsibility as a council, and whether or not we want to vote on these, and the mayor has the right to veto them, and so on and so forth, but again, your rationale can't contradict what is also a conflict of interest in between those two. So you're stating that there's a county agreement, which there is no county agreement, you're stating that you're going to combine it with the budget director, which you can't do because that's, number one, a conflict of interest, and two, there's no such thing as a county. So if you're not going to discharge these, and you're going to vote on it as is, then you, as a councilperson, are taking the responsibility to now vote on something that has zero validity and is against your responsibility and powers as a council.
I apologize if you misunderstood me, my question was. Thank you. Again, if we end up discharging the purchasing things for all those points you just said, even though I don't know why we made an agreement for Oneida County to take over purchasing, side conversation. If we, that all aside, if purchasing was never part of the conversation, I just want to know, is, how much is the budget director's actual salary? Because from what I was told, it wasn't 90,000, and I just think this line should reflect the actual number that they are making. Thank you.
So again, the, the budget director will finish the salary of whatever the budget director is for this, for this fiscal year. With that said, okay, that is the mayor proposed budget. Judge, with all, judge, with all due respect, then you need to advise your council on changing their rationale. Because they're not, according to these amendments, they're not, Judge. I'm getting my advice for myself, because I'm not going to go submit a budget amendment that makes zero sense. But those budget amendments do not say to reduce. Okay. No, you're right, Judge.
That salary can go up or down, you can increase it, you can decrease it.
To zero.
I just don't want to spend a whole night arguing legal terms.
Well, we should have given time other than today.
Vote against it.
Sure.
That's all, that's my answer to that. I'm not going to hear, this is not a court of law, this is, I am your attorney, I advise you on what I think the law is. The corporation counsel is also your attorney, and you can advise them. If we have a difference of opinion, we have a difference of opinion, that's simple as that. We are not the final arbiters of any matter here, as you know. We came close to a lawsuit some years back. I, I was right on one part, the corporation counsel was on another part, and on the other part, we compromised it, that's how we do things.
So Judge, are you saying that you can't put it to zero?
I'm saying that zero, no, you cannot.
Okay, well, that's what the amendment says, zero, so I mean, there's.
I've told them before, you do not go to zero.
Did you say that your amendment, no?
Because that affects the table of organization, and you have eliminated a job, you cannot do that. I, I agree.
So, all right, Judge, thank you.
Because, and let me give you the reason, the only case that exists about eliminating jobs is the Pellic case. Now, the Pellic case, in my opinion, has, the, the law changed, because when Pellic was the law, the law for the common counsel and the budget said counsel could not adjust salaries, and they did, they eliminated his job, and Tenny was right on that part, the rest of his decision was reversed. Has another case been since Pellic? No. But Charter revision changed that law and got rid of the not, and said that the counsel could affect salaries and could affect any item in the budget. So Mr. Brown and I are in sort of semi-agreement. I've told Mr. Brown, I have and would advise my clients to stay away with tampering too much with the salary line, but definitely do not ever eliminate a salary line, especially if it affects the table of organization. I think that's improper. Now, that's my advice, so I don't want to see any zeros in a salary on a budget line.
But I have a.
You can reduce the departmental salary line if you just leave the salary there, and when you get to the salary line, the appellate division that said that's an item, you can reduce that, because that's not reducing the salary, that's reducing a line and an item in the budget. I know that sounds a little technical to you, but we agree on that because the appellate division said so, and that hasn't changed. Now, probably unless you're versed in law, and Mr. Pargy is a lawyer, I don't know if you read Pellic and the appellate division decision, most of what Tenny said in that decision was reversed, but they were very specific about the job, couldn't eliminate the job and the salary, but you could eliminate salaries as an item.
Judge, I think.
Even on the old law.
The next person we've got to talk is, is Mark.
So what I'm concerned about is how are we going to force the mayor to make a part-time position out of these positions? No, if they reduce it, if they reduce the salary, if they reduce the salary, Judge.
Can I answer your question?
Okay.
Because the appellate division also said, and the common counsel said, that the Board of Engraves and the Department of 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 the[1069.81]
Law came out, then there was a referendum that increased your powers considerably. Some talk about whether it was written right in the little poem. I don't care what that says. All I know is that a thousand more people voted for a referendum giving the council more power than didn't vote for it. And that has never been challenged. And through the years that I've been here, and I've been here every year since 2007, we have pretty much followed the same line. We've stayed away from salaries, except in the bulk. We don't eliminate jobs, and that's pretty much what we've done. The rest of the budget is up for grabs. And the time we had the almost court suit was because it was, that was a revenue item. Remember?
Right.
It was a revenue item. And we said the revenue was there. He said it wasn't, and he did something he couldn't do. He didn't veto it. He struck it. I didn't notice. I told John, you can't do that. As far as the revenue, the Comptroller's Office supported the action of the mayor as to whether it existed or not, and was a very good witness. And I said, we'll lose one and we'll win one. And we said to the mayor, we'll give it up. You give us money.
All right, Judge, we're good on that one. Thank you.
Judge, I actually have one more question.
I gotta make one about it. Joe Beatrice wants to let everybody know that he is the senior.
Okay, yeah, tell Joe we love him. Thanks, Joe. Okay, we wouldn't be able to survive without you.
There you go, Joe, we got you.
All right, so Judge, I guess then that goes back to my question, right? So say that the common council eliminates forty thousand of the forty-eight thousand dollars for the purchasing department, right? The mayor wants to go hire somebody for the purchasing department for forty thousand dollars. He transfers it to E and A. E and A comes back to the council. The council has to approve any transfer over forty thousand. If they, or over fifteen thousand. If they choose not to approve it, how does that give the mayor the authority then to do that? Are you saying that the mayor is going to have to sue the council if that's what he feels if a violation of a charter amendment really goes by on that?
I think that's the nature of the government. You have to remember that the annual estimate is nothing more than the annual estimate.
Right, but you're still not.
The mayor and the common council decide how much money they think it takes to run this city.
And I think that that makes sense other than every salary line. But if it's in the table of organization and you eliminate that, and the mayor doesn't have the authority to make that transfer into the account because the common council will always deny that, how does he ever hire somebody?
The purchasing department is a department of the city of Utica. It has not been turned over to the county. I don't think the contractor even do the work has been turned over to the county. And at some point, the city of Utica is going to have, is going to appoint a purchasing agent. There should be money to pay the purchasing agent because it's always existed, as far as I know, in time immemorial. And I would take the average of what that department has always used every year, and I would put it in the budget.
Right, so I guess.
I think that's the prudent thing to do.
I guess then that goes back to my question with the purchasing department. Say you take out thirty thousand dollars out of that salary and you put it down to eighteen thousand. The mayor, obviously, because that wasn't even the previous year's salary, can't hire a purchasing director, and he can't transfer the money into that account, you're still now eliminating the powers of the mayor to actually deal with the table of organization.
You're forgetting one thing. It's the duty of the common council to determine how much money they're going to charge the taxpayer. And they're going to.
But we're not talking about that.
They're going to whittle away at the money because, where they have the power to do so, because the annual estimate is going to determine how much you're going to pay in taxes and how much your taxes.
Judge, you could talk about that every other line other than salary line.
So you'll put these estimates, and the executive branch will then work with them. And they will pick and choose.
No, because you need to explain, that needs to be explained.
Don't talk over me.
Yeah, but you're not answering my question. You're rambling on things that don't make sense.
I'm saying to you, they have the power to do that, and I've told them how to, I'm telling you how to do it, which is prudent. Now, nothing is set in concrete here because a lot of the monies you see in one account, when you look at what actually we spent during the year, was a lot less or a lot more. Because the estimate was wrong. So the estimate has to be corrected. And the common council usually is a partner in correcting the estimate that was either deficient or they were right that they gave too much money and the tax was lower.
All right, well, Judge, we gotta move on. Judge, we gotta move on. We gotta move on. We got a lot left here. Katie, what I want you to do is take these and fix them. If you want them, leave them in there. You gotta adjust the salary line and everything behind it. So we're looking, so we're looking at eleven through seventeen.
I understand.
My suggestion, wait.
I'm going to the next one.
My suggestion would be ten through seventeen. Do you have an E and A representative? The E and A representative should send it to E and A where they have the authority to eliminate a salary line, and they should make that recommendation through E and A, not through the common council where it questions.
No, the common council could do anything they want when it comes to this.
No, they can't.
Because they're adjusting the budget the way they want it.
That's not the case.
Well, let's stop it there. Mike, you had one last thing to say.
So take it to E and A.
Yeah, so I just want to say two things. So one, we are no longer in talks with anything with purchasing with the county.
You're not going to do anything, you're saying?
We were.
That's totally off the board?
Totally off.
All right, so we need to talk about it. All right, let's move on. Thank you, Mike.
One second.
I'm tracking on that. Katie, did you have a question on that?
I just wanted Mike to finish.
And then the other thing on the budget salary, so the budget director was hired. I don't know the salary, totally offhanded, is in the seventies. There's extra money in the salary line because of understanding that we'll probably need somebody to provide training there and stuff probably that would have been in the comptroller's budget line, but it's going to move over.
Well, that's something that the council decided, how much they want to give them. But thank you, I appreciate it. Anyone else on this last subject before we move on? We've, no, we're not rushing through it.
Jump to eighteen.
We're not.
Yeah, we are.
The next one. We're not rushing. I won't hear it.
We can revisit purchasing tomorrow if we can go to eighteen.
All right. Next one is printing. It's proposed ordinance number eighteen, printing, from ten thousand to one thousand, nine thousand dollars change. Can you explain?
Yes, there was.
I'm sure the corporation counsel person would like to know.
There is one year where it did exceed over a thousand. It seemed like an intense year. We haven't seen anything similar to that. So for this year, to reduce the tax levy, being sensitive to a budget for one thousand and go from there.
Mr. George, I'll let you say if you have anything to say on that.
The only thing I'll say is I'm sure my boss set forth what he believed would be in our budget. We do, it varies what we do for printing. If it's a year where we have a ton of briefs or documents that we need to print, we still have to supply hard copies to the court. So we still do a lot of printing in addition to anything that we do for all of our FOIL requests and/or subpoenas. We are constantly printing and submitting those. Those have to be delivered hard copies to the court. So we do do a lot of printing within our office.
Thank you. Any, Sam, Mark? I'll give you a minute, go ahead. I'll give you a minute to go over something. Venice?
Okay. Frank? Go ahead.
Just a question for corporation counsel. Can we find out how many pending appeals there are that still need to be perfected?
I can look. I know that our printing doesn't just account for pending.
Just to get an idea of that aspect of corporation counsel's budget, just to take that into consideration.
Well, I'm good.
And I just wanted to add, just for context, there was, in 2022, corporation counsel spent ten thousand four hundred dollars on printing. But in 2020, it was four hundred dollars. In 2021, it was six fifty. And this year, year-to-date, it's been a hundred and thirty-one dollars. So it's quite.
Well, that's COVID. That was during the COVID time when nothing was happening in the city. Everything was shut down.
But this year is a hundred and thirty-one dollars. That's, we can table it and discuss further if we want, but.
Anyone else? All right, that's what we're here for. All right, the next one. Number nineteen.
Yes.
Contracted services.
This one was, we, I remember.
Well, let me finish reading that.
Please.
From corporation counsel contracted services from a hundred and eighty to a hundred and sixty, a change of twenty thousand dollars.
The mayor emphasized that a concern is, you know, on E and A, we already approved a fifty thousand dollars for contracted services for this coming year on top of what they already do. So the average year, three years, is about a hundred and ten thousand dollars is what we see on that line. So what we did is we actually took that one ten, added the fifty thousand to compensate for this extra that we've approved for the year, and that would bring us to a hundred and sixty thousand we were hoping to approve. So not the full one eighty, save twenty thousand, but still give the mayor and the administration that fifty thousand they need for the contracted services.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Let's take a look at the next one. Number twenty, proposed ordinance number twenty, engineering education and training from five thousand to zero. Please explain.
This one has always been zero. I didn't know, we didn't hear from engineering what the goal was with this five thousand.
Did you send an email?
I think so.
Okay, so just to cover ourselves, can you have engineering here tomorrow to see if they'd like, if there's any issues on that? Thank you. Anybody else on that? Okay. Next one, number twenty-one. Engineering contracted services from ninety thousand to seventy-five thousand, fifteen thousand dollars change.
This one, personally, I was looking to discharge after talking with engineering. They do utilize this, and it did exceed already the seventy-five thousand we were looking at.
So we're going to discharge this.
Yeah, I think so.
Next one. DPW central garage other equipment from forty thousand to thirty-five thousand, five thousand dollars change. Please explain.
Yes. This one would come to, it was, it was budgeted for twenty thousand in the past. Year-to-date, we haven't quite hit that thirty-five thousand yet, so still giving them an extra fifteen thousand that was budgeted in the past, just not the full twenty thousand.
What was it, say that it was four dollars? You don't, nobody has an answer for why you want to go that low. What have they been spending in there?
Well, that's where, do you have?
I don't have anything to do on that one, but I can get back to Dave and get on that tomorrow.
I mean, is he planning on buying more equipment this time? He might be. Some stuff has a longevity to it. I mean, did we talk to Dave Short at all?
Dave and Tom, I mean.
Yes, we have. And the three-year average for this has also been twenty thousand. And I understand sometimes, you know, your line gets pulled early, and you wanted to buy stuff, but you didn't get to. So.
I know. What I'm saying is, did you talk to Dave Short and say, I'm buying new lawnmowers this year?
We did have, we were here for our budget meeting. That did not come up at that time. So we'll see what he says tomorrow, and I'll come back tomorrow.
All right.
When I talked, yeah.
Okay.
When I talked with Dave, the big concern, of course, was don't touch salt and the seasonal employees. We didn't get to that one, so we'll go.
We certainly don't want to cut short to DPW, so we'll make sure.
We're going to get there.
We're always cutting you short anyway, so we'll see what happens. All right. Next one is the public safety commissioner. Now, this is, once again, we're going to look at this. You see that there's a zero amount in there that can't be.
There's proposed amendments.
So if you're, you're planning on amending this on the floor tomorrow, correct?
Yes, they're actually introduced, and we can, tomorrow night, we can introduce them in committee, the correct ones. They're available for everybody to see. I'm just legally not allowed to discuss it until 24 hours.
Mike, did you want to say?
Can we go back on this one one second?
Yes.
I just got a text. It's through the Plowblades. The Plowblades went up. It's through the Plowblades.
Give them a call with them.
So I'll just say, you know, we talked.
What are we talking on this?
I'm going to comment on that, and then we can jump to that.
Okay, very good.
So, you know, we're looking at three-year averages, and we've also said for the last four weeks that there's been inflation and everything's gone up. So it doesn't seem totally irrational to say that these budget lines have to have an increase and that the three-year average doesn't correspond with that. As far as the public safety commissioner, I'm just going to reiterate, any idea that this is a position that can be cut is, in my opinion and the administration's opinion, irresponsible.
Go ahead, Katie.
That's, yeah, we were, you know, when we spoke with the police chief, it was on the conversation that they felt like they didn't need one for their personal services. I understand the administration might have other goals. When I got the preliminary budget on E and A, it wasn't anywhere in the budget. So that was one thing to look at, and I think that's where it should return to that intent. Just, you know, in a year where we're raising taxes sixteen and a half percent on top of the three point five million we're taking out of city reserves, maybe give it a year and see where we're at.
Katie, when you were campaigning for another elected official, may I speak? Did she ask to speak?
Yes.
Oh, he raised my hand like I'm in class. All right, I will. So I guess my question to you is that, you know, when you were, you know, supporting Celeste to run for mayor, that was one of your main campaign topics, and I think I could print that out, that you were asking, actually pushing extremely hard for a public safety commissioner. I guess it's kind of funny to see how the temperaments change and where we're at now in eliminating that position.
If you want me to speak to that, these two people had very different visions of what public safety commissioners were going to do, so.
If you don't mind, can you actually explain that? Because I would actually like to hear that. The two different visions. Now, go ahead, explain from your perspective.
I think, I think before, if this was a position that was going to look more at codes and just the safety of kind of a, they said holistic approach, but when I hear that, it was also going to be a position that wasn't going to just be sixty-five thousand. So that's also where I'm looking at this.
What was it supposed to be?
The public safety commissioner, the other role. I don't see why it would be. Are we going to cut off? But yeah.
No, yeah, just.
And also, but you guys want to pretend like I'm being hypocritical, but it was obviously, I mean, if it wasn't in the first budget, and then it was an aha, and then we add it into the approved one. It's just a political game, it feels like. So if you guys want a public safety commissioner and go against what the chief says, go for it. But otherwise, I just didn't see, it just didn't feel like it was actually felt through, thought through, and it was available sixty-five to seventy thousand dollars to help taxpayers this year.
All right, Mark, you next.
So what bothers me is like, we're basically telling the mayor, you can't hire nobody because we're going to lower the salaries. It's going to be a part-time thing. It's like having a deputy chief. All of a sudden, we're going to drop the deputy chief down to twenty thousand dollars, and he's got, and we got to hire one for twenty thousand dollars. It doesn't make sense. How are we cutting the staff of the mayor?
I'd like.
It's just wrong. I just, it's, I mean, you're going to cut the salaries down. How are you supposed to hire somebody to take care of it? Take care of that position? It's just wrong. It's totally wrong.
I'd like to say something on that.
I'll give you that.
All right. Good thing I know her. Now, listen, this is a sixteen and a half percent tax increase, which is, I consider ridiculous, and maybe some people on this panel don't, but I think there's a lot of us that do. And I think there's a lot of people outside who, outside, that live in the city of Utica that think this is ridiculous. So no. When you're, when you have a sixteen percent and a half tax increase, you look to cut where you think you can. We haven't had a public safety commissioner in about eight years. We haven't needed one. I've asked both sides of it up. You could correct me, go ahead. Was it six years?
It's cost the city.
Well, I don't think it's cost the city.
Quite a bit.
So what, so what I'm saying is, if this is a year that we're going to tighten our belt, this is the year we're going to do it. Let me explain another thing, and not to get on my horse here, but we pass a sixteen and a half percent tax increase. That's a tax increase that's, we're just not going to pay this year. We're going to pay it next year. We're going to pay it next year. And then next year, you're going to have maybe a two to four percent probably. Before you know it, people cannot afford this, folks. We're pricing ourselves, we're pricing our families out of living in the city of Utica. I've talked to a number of people on the street, a ton of people on the street. Everybody thinks this is ludicrous to pass a sixteen and a half percent tax increase. I think, I think it's selfish, and I think that we have to think, we have to worry about our residents more than we're worried about a public safety commissioner, because I think we have two outstanding chiefs here now that can run their departments. Thank you. Mark, you could go ahead. You wanted to say something?
I was actually next, I have a reason again, and then I'll let Mark speak. So number one, I was actually going to support you on this amendment, but I wouldn't support just lowering it, because then that still leaves the room for keeping that position in there. But we're going to talk about what brought us to this point, okay? And that's number one, that a mayor, that a majority of this council supported. If you look at the 2022 budget, and the city of Utica was at seventy-three million dollars. If you look at the twenty-three budget, that budget went up four million dollars. If you look at the twenty-three, twenty-four budget that this council supported, okay, it went up an extra seven million dollars. All right? So to sit here and say that I want a sixteen and a half percent tax increase is, that's ludicrous. That's number one. And number two, I think that I, I think that I've been telling this council for quite some time now, okay? Voted no on the budget that last previous year because I knew it was astronomical, that seven million dollar increase. And I had to sit with this council that had zero oversight in what the administration did. We worked without a budget director for a year and a half. We went over on paving. I mean, we never put money towards our debt service that's costing us a million and a half in this budget, because what they did was they kicked the can down the road. Well, we're here now, and this is what we're doing. And I, and I don't think that for anybody to speak on the behalf of this council and say that, I don't know, who wants a sixteen and a half percent tax increase, but I can sure as hell tell you that I don't. With that said, with that said, back in 2012, when this council dealt with a budget deficit of close to seven million dollars, we actually made some pretty difficult decisions. Deputy Chief Noonan could sit here in front of me. He was, he was demoted in his position. And chief, and I think that you can attest to the fact that it's taken us quite some time to get back to a budget that's getting us to, that got us to a point that we could, we could sustain what we have. What ended up happening was there was irresponsible budgeting, and there was irresponsible leadership inside the city that I didn't vote to extend their terms. So everybody can sit here and pretend that everybody doesn't have a problem with everything else, but guess what? We're here because nobody had any oversight over Rob Paul Mary for the last four years of his administration. So that, that's number, that's, that's the point that I want to make. Okay? So I would have supported you on eliminating this public safety commissioner, and I think that that's going to be up to Mayor Galimi to either veto our amendment or actually take us to court and kind of let the council understand their powers on what we have as a council, saying I could just, I could diminish the salary, right? Like I could diminish, I know I have the authority to diminish the salaries of the police and fire line, right? Because that's our say in the complement. Okay? But I don't have the right to add, I don't have the right to hire a public safety commissioner. I don't have the right to hire a purchasing agent. I don't have the right to hire a budget director, but yet I'm sitting here and going to eliminate a line that says, guess what? That's in your authority, but I'm going to eliminate that position. So I think this council either needs to take a step back and say, this is what I actually want to do, and either, number one, give it to your E and A representative that you could support to bring to the count, to bring to the E and A board, or that this council is going to have to make that decision on the tough decisions. And unfortunately, Mayor Galimi is going to either have to bring us to, bring this council to court on any decision that they make if he feels not in the right, in their right authority, or we're going to have to sit here and say, listen, this, this is, this is where we're going to get to a point of where we're going to agree to disagree and kind of go from there. But this back and forth of lowering the public safety commissioner or lowering the purchasing department or adding a responsibility when we don't have that authority to hire or fire anybody in those departments, I think is really kind of putting us in a bad situation that's not going to get us to the determination on what we can do as a legislative body. So I'm going to tell everybody, like I said, an email, put on your big boy pants, okay? And actually make the decision if you want to go from sixty-five to zero, or you want to go to sixty-five and twenty and say, guess what? We're going to leave you twenty thousand dollars for a public safety commissioner, even though we think you shouldn't have one. Okay? So that's the, that's what this council is going to have to do. Either give the responsibility to the board of E and A member that has that right to go do it, or just sit here and pretend that we're doing something for the city. I mean, enough's enough.
I think that the people that put in these amendments put their big boy pants on, to tell you the truth, because we're the ones that are cutting. We're the ones that are asking the mayor to take a look at his budget again and to trim it down. Did our, we work for.
Did you ask me to support this?
We work for the citizens of the city of Utica.
Did you ask me to support your public safety commissioner?
Yes, I would love you.
When? When did you ask me prior to this meeting?
I would love you.
Right now. So now you're telling me I would have supported you at zero, but now you're telling me I got to support you at twenty-five.
So let's talk about putting our big pants.
No, that is putting your big boy pants on. Vote on your amendments, because that's what you believe.
If you're wearing your big boy pants, you're willing to trim, you're willing to work for the citizens of this city, not a sixteen and a half percent tax increase. All right?
The people of the city want a public safety commissioner.
That's good. So you find somewhere else to pay them, not wearing that sixteen and a half percent. We're going to trim it. If the mayor doesn't like what we're trimming, he'll give it back to us, and we'll go from there, Mike. It's his, at the end of the, at the end of the day, it's his budget. We're trying to help him here. We're trying to find where we could, where we could save the city some money. At the end of the day, he's going to, he's going to give it back to us. I got it. Thank you. I appreciate it. And I think that it's very disrespectful that you're talking to me that way right now, okay? You're a guest right here right now. I'm making a statement. I don't need to hear your bullshit, so cut it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
You're wrong about the people wanting a public safety commissioner. Most of the people, I don't know who you're talking to, but most of the people I've spoken to, and I speak to a lot of people, don't want one because they feel like their department heads for the police department, the DPW, and the, and the fire department can do that job. So I don't know where you guys come up from, where they're from, but that's not true. Thank you.
They wanted a public safety commissioner.
All right, are we going to move on? Go ahead, Frank.
Jack. You're over here yelling at everybody. You went on the radio.
You went on the radio.
I'm not yelling, Frank. I'm yelling.
You were yelling.
I'm rebuttling.
Can I talk?
I'm rebuttling. Go ahead.
You went on the radio, you said you had 57 amendments, you threw out 23 of them yourself, and you made it sound like we, who I don't know who was we, but if I was in that boat with the we, I'd jump off right now because you couldn't answer half the questions they asked you.
I didn't answer one question.
I'm talking right now.
I'm rebuttling to you.
I'm talking.
Go ahead. But you just lied. I did not answer half of them, okay?
Then you gave 57 amendments, and you made it sound like the rest of us weren't working. We were out there talking. You just didn't showboat on the radio like you.
How many amendments have you put on here?
We got about 10 right now.
How many amendments have you written?
We got about 10 right now.
How many have you written?
I'm not talking. You went on, you showboat. You're a free showboater.
I'm not showboating. I'm working for the city.
That's why we're in this position. Because you guys played a political part.
How much land do you own in the city?
Jack, you're the chair.
How much land do you own in the city?
He's not. He's the chairperson of the committee, so he's got to get control of his own meeting.
All right. I apologize. All right, go ahead.
Everybody else has said, but you didn't let him talk.
I'm not showboating. When you throw lies out there against me, when you throw lies out there against me, I'm not going to put up with it.
In about three seconds, I'm going to ask the majority of this council to change their chairmanship over to somebody else, because this is not going to tolerate, especially when we've been.
Mr. Chairman, I had a...
I just got to clarify. On behalf of the chief, he's not opposed to a Public Safety Commissioner. He's opposed to a Public Safety Commissioner as it was in the previous, with previous Public Safety Commissioners. He feels it shouldn't be someone who oversees the departments, but he is comfortable with someone who would handle grievances, handle contractual disputes, and handle nuisance abatement. Just wanted to clarify where he stands.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I do have a couple of questions on this proposal for the Chief of Staff, just to clarify a couple of things. Was this position the vision to be a part-time or a full-time position?
It would probably end up being a part-time position.
Okay. And I think when the mayor came in, he had mentioned, I think the Chief of Police had also mentioned, the vision here was to hire possibly an attorney or former judge. I just want to make sure I'm getting that right. All right. Anything else we should know about this line based on who the person is the administration would seek to fill it with?
There's several applicants, and unfortunately, when it's out that people want to cut the position, it's hard to interview for a position that might be cut.
Have the applicants been local to the extent you know? Local or beyond the area?
Yes, all of them.
Okay. So, when you say part-time, what would that look like in terms of hours obligations? Just to get an idea of what the mayor would envision with this position.
I don't know exactly like an hourly, what that expectation it would be, but to support the both chiefs in labor disputes and stuff, and really create that barrier between the administration and the departments.
Okay. And I suppose I could look at the table of the organization. My recollection is this would be a non-union position, just out of curiosity.
Yes.
I think that's correct. Okay. Thank you. I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, we're going to move on from 20...
26.
I think that would go, hang on a second. That would affect the fight. So, we're going to 26 now.
I can add to this?
Go ahead, 26.
Our police relations position, she is no longer with the team. This is a position that was added during ARPA, out of ARPA as well. I know that the ARPA lines, I believe there was about 400,000 to 450,000 left in that as well. So, one of the thought processes was, again, you know, it's 16.5% tax increase, which is $5 million plus the 3.5 million. We're talking $8 million. We're looking to cut savings somewhere. This police relations is one that we want to do it with, just for this year. And, so, yeah, that's 16.5%.
So, I think that just for clarification purposes, is that this person left after the position was, or excuse me, after the Board of E&amp;A voted to approve this actual budget. So, it wasn't brought to anybody's attention until after that this position could be eliminated. This one, I think that coming for the fact that this was done also through that, I guess kind of the clarification of the same thing, eliminating this, because again, we didn't have any say to when this position was hired, but this would be a position that I would be in support of eliminating. But again, I wasn't privy to the information that the person that was in this position was resigning. So, again, something that nobody knew about until this was actually presented to us.
Sure.
Mike? Deputy, anything?
So, first of all, the position did a nice job. She chose to move on to another agency. And, I mean, it was certainly helpful, but certainly understand council's position on eliminating it, given the financial situation.
And I also just want to, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to re-interrupt, but I think that taking to the fact that this was also included in the ARPA revenue line, I think that it's got to have a little clarification on what those funds could be reallocated for, because again, those positions that we approved, that the council approved was done through ARPA, that came from the mayor, that he was allocating those lines. So, I just think that the reallocation, otherwise, this is, you're eliminating this position and also there's going to be extra funds in those revenue lines for ARPA. So, I think there needs to be a second component on what that $45,000 could be used, or excuse me, that $63,000 could be used towards, for the ARPA funding. But again, we don't have the authority to allocate ARPA funding. That's going to come from the administration. So, why I support this, there has to be something done through the Board of E&amp;A for that extra $63,000 in ARPA allocation, since the council doesn't have that authority.
Anyone else?
Who was the last public safety commissioner? Do you know?
Rob Paul Mary.
Rob Paul Mary. And before that, it was Cornell, Cornell May?
Dan LaBella.
Or was it somebody?
Dan LaBella.
Oh, Dan LaBella. Okay. I was just wondering, because I remember Cornell May, but I didn't know who took this place after.
It was Cornell May, Phil Torcino, Cornell May, Tim Julian, Phil Torcino, Dan LaBella, Rob Paul Mary.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike?
I'm off, sir.
Joe?
Nothing, thank you.
No, I'm good on this one.
How's that? Thank you.
Next one is number 30, Police Uniform Division, overtime paid 20 to 150.
Oh.
Did I skip one?
Yeah. 28, I believe.
Oh, there was the repairs. I'm sorry. Let's go to 28. I apologize.
Where's 27?
27, we already did. That's the one we just did.
No, that was 26.
Did we do 26 yet?
27 never got voted in. We...
Well, we did. We talked 26.
What was that one?
I don't know.
Well, this is the one we just...
26 was the police administration line, police relations.
Oh, it was because it was always the positions for ARPA that should have been eliminated. We don't have that authority. Okay.
28 we're on then, right?
Yep. So, this was the...
Police Administration Division Repairs from 220 to 175.
And then, Deputy Chief, if you want to speak to this, in the past, it's been 125,000, and this was one where, again, of course, repairs are needed. We were thinking, give it up to 175,000, and then the proposal was 220,000, so we're still taking out that 45, but putting in an extra 50 then years passed.
Sure. No, we've experienced, I mean, just like everything else, significant cost increase in parts for vehicles, actually astronomical. All I can say is we'll do our best. I mean, you know, the vehicles are what they are. It's some years we have to replace transmissions, other years we can get by hopefully this year.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Next one is number 30, Police Uniform Division, overtime paid from 200 to 150.
This was with the ARPA. We don't have that discretion, so we were next seeing this one also. I'm going to discharge it. Yeah.
Next one is Police Uniform Division Night Differential, 160 to 150.
This is one that we have not ever seen us go above. It's been an average of 124,000, so we were looking to just take off 10,000 to make it 150, and that's still something we have not come close to in years past. So, we're just trying to shave off a little here.
I guess it all depends, so it's contractual, right? I think it all depends on whether we're a full complement or not, and whether we have vacancies.
But we've been using what? What did they use later?
It was a three-year average of 124,000. Year-to-date, we're at 92,000, a little over, so.
But you also have to remember, there's still...
And it's been budgeted for 160.
There's still how many days left, I mean, how many pay periods left? This is another thing that we have to understand. I mean, I think we've got one more pay period till the fiscal year is completed. And Chief, are you at your full complement now that you just hired those additional police officers?
So, we have, we always run with vacancies. We're at three vacancies now. We just hired three, but we've set two people leave the state police, so we have three more. We're hiring six.
So, do you feel that the $10,000 in differential pay might have to go to those additional?
Here's the deal. It's contractual, so we're going to have to pay it regardless if we don't. It's kind of a roll of the dice.
To save 10,000.
We've never seen it. It's been removed in the past.
Go ahead. So, you know, with the violence that's going on in the city this past three, four months of 2024, homicides, guns, everything's happening, and how are we going to reduce the Police Uniform Division? And criminal investigation? And the thing is, it is contractual. It's a roll of dice. I think this is gamemanship. Mike?
So, one thing I left out too, which ties into that, right, is overtime. So, the night differential, if they work during those hours, it's overtime. So, whether there's a homicide or if there's something significant going on, that would therefore increase the night differential. It's all tied together. I mean, at the end of the day...
Roll the dice.
As of March 7th, we're only 57% through the budget that we have for that line, so it was $90,000. And that was, you know, we only had a few more weeks left in the month to pay for. That's why we were looking at that, and you'll see the similar one in the next amendment.
Do we know if all those have been paid out yet? Are there any outstanding vouchers or anything like that, anything?
Generally speaking, it's a month behind, and I do know that, so, I mean, it's when the Councilor's Office reconciles all that.
So, we could be on point with those actual numbers?
Could be high.
We never have been in the past. That's just what I wanted to add.
We gone on that one?
Yep.
We also haven't had an increase of violent crimes that the police has had to respond, that they've had to over the past couple of years, I think.
Number 33, Police Criminal Investigation Division Night Differential, from 160 to 150.
It's the same explanation.
All right. Next one would be 34, City Court Electric Service, 75 to 65. That's number 134.
Okay. And this one is, we're actually looking to end up making this down to 10,000? You're at City Court one, right? 34?
Right.
It's going to be 75,000 to 10,000, so it's meant to be a $65,000 savings, and that's because we have not exceeded $10,000. The three-year average right now is 8,500. The last time we've ever spent even close to this was about three years ago.
So, have we looked at the revenue lines as well for that? Because isn't this a reimbursable line through City Court?
This one is not part of it, though. This is, we do get maintenance for 100,000, but this one is like a separate thing, and they don't know why. It's been set at 75,000. It was when I asked the contractor.
The city provides the maintenance and all the costs, all the care for City Court. That's actually a question for Steve Price. He's the one who, department head who oversees City Courts. I have any questions for him. He does a little maintenance charge and maintenance at City Court. I don't have an answer.
All right. Let's take a next, we'll get the next one, number 35, Contracted Services, from 175 to 160.
This one, I think we were actually looking to possibly discharge, because I think, I got it confused. I know we are switching to the states taking back over a lot of the services, but that was a different line item, not contracted services. So, we probably want to discharge this.
36 is out?
Number 36, Repairs, 25 to 20.
This one was, hold on one second. Yeah, repairs, year-to-date, we're at like 4,500. The average has been 17,000. And again, with reducing our obligations now with the state taking over a lot of it, we thought we could still give it a little bit more than before, but didn't need to be the full amount.
Anybody? Good on that? Everybody good on that? All right. Fire Administration, Other Equipment.
This was one where we spent $5,000 in 2020, but there's been $0 ever spent on it since. So, just one looking to trim, and if that was a possibility, we were hopeful.
Anything, anybody talk to the chief on this?
Chief Ingersoll said that that line was to purchase new computers to replace outdated equipment.
Computers. Thank you.
And I have correspondence for all of the fire.
And the next one, Mike? Fire Prevention, Replacement Overtime, 20 to 15. Katie on that one?
Yep, this one was Fire Prevention.
He just said that that line is for the Fire Marshal Office to investigate fires code issues and conduct training hours.
Yeah, the three-year average was about 15,000. Year-to-date, we're at 7,300. We have a budget of 20,000, so.
I think, so I just think they're both that. They're behind. Year-to-date is probably still in January.
These, I have the March 7th one, but yeah, we can revisit these ones on tomorrow. Did you have another one on?
The next one is Fire Prevention Computers, Computer Software, 15 to 10.
Yeah, so that's just paying for existing software and code enforcement that's already in use, so that's the...
Oh, yeah, I think we're...
Yeah.
This one's a full 15, right? That's what they're...
Yeah.
Does it sound good?
Like, that's a fixed.
Yeah, he did mention that.
Yeah, yeah, he did. We were going to discharge this one, sorry.
So, we're discharging this, right?
Yep, that one is. This, I have questions on the food contracted one. I was talking to Deputy Chief Noon.
Which one? Whoa, 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 what are you talking about?
Sorry, the next one.
Okay, number 41?
Yes.
Okay, number 41, Fire Training, Contracted Services, from 70 to 60.
And it has been said that if we do that, then you want to reduce the revenue because it's even, but when I went to the revenue, the revenue actually only shows 45,000. So, hopefully, we can actually increase the revenue to match what this is, or if anybody else can speak to that.
What are you talking about?
The contracted food services for training for fire. So, we're...
Who have you been talking to?
Forty food services.
I was talking with Deputy Chief Noon yesterday, or two days ago.
Deputy Chief Noonan?
No.
So, Assistant Chief Noon.
Jim, Assistant, thank you. Noon, I said Noon. And he wasn't sure, when we were looking at the lines, if the 45,000 for contracted services was for their food services, and I haven't been able to get an answer on that.
So, the explanation here, this line effectively is a pass-through from students enrolled at the Utica Fire Academy. Current enrollment for the spring of 2024 is 33 students. Current cost of food for the students is $1,600, making the total food cost 52,800. Projected student enrollment for fall 2024 is 30 students, with the projected food cost increase of 10%. So, all food contracted services are through MVCC, so that's...
Do you happen to know the, on the revenue side, what we get for that then? Because I think we could increase that, because I think that was left at the old unit, and we're actually missing some revenue there then.
Yeah, he didn't speak to any revenue.
I'll find out more on that tomorrow.
Next one's 42.
Oh, shoot, what was that one?
Contracted Food Services, from 80 to 50.
That's what I was just talking about. I apologize. So, contracted services, well, we covered 42, so that's great. Contracted Services was the separate one from 70 to 60,000. This one was a three-year average. Sorry, I'm going back to the one we were just at on 41. The three-year average has been 41,000. Chief of Staff, can you speak to what that was for?
It's to account for new state and federally mandated inspections.
Inspections. Thank you.
All right, number 42, Fire Training, Contracted Food Service.
That's one I just spoke about before, that's ahead of backwards.
Anybody have anything on that? Okay, next one, 44, Fire Communications, Other Equipment, Radios, 45 to 10.
This is one that I was, you know, we obviously can't allocate ARPA, but in the past, it's always been 10,000 allocated, and the thought was we can fund it for what we normally do at 10,000, and any extras that we can get this year to outbid the rest of the speakers they're looking for, perhaps, since it's one-time expense, ARPA would be a good fit for that 35,000.
So, I just want to talk for the contracted services for the food service?
Yeah.
So, we still have to pay, this one's 42, so we still have to pay for those food services for our firefighters, correct?
Trainers.
For the trainees, right. So, your revenue lines, unless you know that you're going to have those in there, I don't think would match up that.
I just didn't think it was going to be half, but maybe, so.
Is there some kind of percentage or use of it?
No, Frank, so we pay for our own guys that are in there, and then we get reimbursed through them, but like, we still have to budget for the people that we're going to have.
So, the last year, the last year was 45,000, and I thought we were doing more classes this year, possibly, so ideally, we were going to get more money regardless, and that's what I was hoping for if we're, we can cancel that one altogether, but I'll learn more tomorrow as well. If anybody else talks with everybody, we can just go from there.
My budget amendments, but...
All right, number 44, Fire Communication, Other Equipment, Radios, 45 to 10.
I just went over that one.
Yeah, I can't speak to the possibility of ARPA. Says full replacement of the station number seven. Alerting system is needed at a projected cost of 24,000, and additionally, the fire department has to replace approximately 15 radio speaker microphones at a cost of 600 per unit.
All right, next one's 45.[1560.13] All right, next one's forty-five.
This one with the other equipment.
Fire mechanic, other equipment from ten to five.
We were looking at, it's, you know, uh, year-to-date, it was zero dollars, but the year prior, it was about five hundred dollars spent on this line. And for ten thousand dollars, we were looking to see if it hasn't been utilized that much, if we could get away with five thousand this year.
According to chief fingersaw, this line is completely exhausted at this time.
That's new. Thank you.
And I just wanna make a point to this council is that a lot of these accounts have not been reconciled, so while the averages for this year might be lower, there's still vouchers that have to be paid out until the end of the fiscal year, and actually, after the fiscal year is completed. Um, so, uh, again, I think, you know, your contracted service lines or repair lines, there's, there's a lot of these things in there that. I, I, I just, it's definitely something that the council's gonna have to take into consideration, that's all.
Yep.
Are some of these vouchers from other quarters, not just this current quarter?
So, and, and there's, hopefully, there's not any outstanding, but I don't know, according to the, the audit that we received, that a lot of the accounts have, had have been reconciled?
I've been doing, uh, comparisons of past budgets. Every year-to-date, we get is usually like in February, and then I do a comparison compared to what we actually come in at, and they're, they all range from seventy-five percent to about ninety-five percent, so on different ones. They do come in at different times, but I can pull the numbers on that too. So even the estimates, we're thinking. Yep.
And again, three-year averages.
You've gotta remember, three-year averages go back to where? Two thousand twenty, which a lot of these costs didn't happen to that extent for the simple fact that that year was COVID. I mean, obviously, our police and fire departments and DPW ran, but your, your other lines, I mean, there's, there's, it's a, it's a different time to use a three-year average, I think, is really what you have to, you have to look at kind of like your prior year to, to COVID, and then maybe your last, this past year, if you're doing three-year averages.
Well, on the last one, we had only spent, uh, four hundred fifty dollars, so I was hoping that that was more of the pattern we were looking at in the future. So for EMT fire, for number forty-seven, education and training.
Yeah, next one is forty-seven, EMT, education and training, seventy-five.
Um, chief fingersaw said, eight recently hired firefighters need to be enrolled into the paramedic program. Current cost is approximately ten K per student.
Okay.
Did you explain that when you was here?
Yeah. Probably discharged that one. I'll, we'll look at that one. That was, I thought it was for the other one, okay.
Katie, you're discharging this one?
Yeah, I think this was, did you? I don't even know, I, I think this one wasn't even supposed to get voted in.
Say again?
I, I think this one wasn't supposed to be introduced in the end, so my apologies, we're gonna discharge this one. On our budget or yours? This is.
This, this one, eighty-seven. Next one is, uh, proposal audits forty-eight, fire EMT, contracted EMT billing, one sixty.
So in the past, we've always budgeted a hundred and forty-five thousand. Year-to-date was about ninety-five thousand. Three-year average has been a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. This is something, uh, we were still giving an extra five thousand than we've ever had before, and even come close to spending, but still ten thousand under, just not filling the full fifteen thousand request at this time.
He wrote, a new contract was awarded to Medex in November of twenty twenty-three. The new contract will cost approximately fourteen K per month.
What's the Medex line?
Next door party building.
Oh, sorry.
So it's going up, so I mean, either way, they're gonna have to move it around. So it's a smoke and mirror kind of.
Okay. There's a lot of.
Next one is DPW garage, oh, number forty-nine, excuse me, DPW garage repairs, twenty-five to twenty. Mark, Isaiah, any?
What are you hearing to average this?
This one was, uh, this one was, uh, year-to-date, we spent fourteen hundred. Three-year average has been about fifteen thousand. So, and the year, uh, last year, we spent seven thousand, so this is one that we were looking, uh, it was twenty-five thousand was given, and we were looking if we could get it down to twenty thousand.
Right, well, I can get back to that, and then it's tomorrow day. All right.
I will, I'll just say real quick, when we were putting the budget together and going through, like, repair lines and stuff, department heads were coming in with repairs that needed to be done. It wasn't a, this might have to happen, that they were projected because of things that have not been done or needing to be done within this fiscal year. So even if the averages are off, it's still be for work that needs to get done. There's a little bit of a buffer for surprises, but a lot of it was, this hadn't been done for five years, and now we're at the end of the road.
Thank you.
Uh, so number fifty-one, parts maintenance.
And this was kind of on the same tone of, so with fuel.
Yeah, you, to fuel for five thousand.
Yeah, year-to-date, we were at about twenty-one thousand. Uh, our average, three-year average was thirty thousand, and, uh, just looking if we can shave off fifty thousand, because we've never come close to hitting that. If we could shave off five thousand to make it fifty thousand.
All right, next one is infrastructure, uh, number fifty-two, contractual stormwater.
This is one that was proposed last year. It was at two hundred fifty thousand. The council proposed to increase sales tax to account for an extra hundred thousand on that line, just in case, just in case it never happened. My proposal is put it back to the original intent of the two hundred fifty thousand this year.
So I didn't support this last year when it was proposed, and I. I have no, I, it, this was an additional flood mitigation that they planned on doing. Um, we had several flood mitigation task force committee, meetings, um, that, that was hosted with the city. Unfortunately, we, you know, switching administrations and, you know, we kinda weren't gaining that much traction, um, as far as writing grants, which I will say, we did, we did do a couple of grants, um, throughout that year. This one shouldn't have been voted on, because again, sales tax revenue is down from last year, and we increased an extra two hundred thousand dollars, which I was also against, um, so we kinda had anticipated revenue that we didn't receive. Um, so I, I have no problem with this one for the simple fact that I didn't support it last year.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Next is infrastructure repairs, fifteen thousand to five thousand, change fourteen-five.
To five hundred.
Thank you.
Yeah, this one was, uh, fifteen thousand has been budgeted. We spent sixty-five dollars year-to-date. The three-year average is zero dollars, so.
You're saying we spent sixty-five dollars now year-to-date?
Yeah, sixty-five dollars.
I talked to Austin this morning, and we have two people in infrastructure that are under me now, Sadad and his partner. They spent eight thousand on part of a vehicle with the vehicle, and something to do that I can find, try to find out tomorrow for the general.
And that would be in the repairs.
So it would be repairs in top on only the seventy-five hundred hours that he has for a budget to get material to start the year to do the abatements.
And is that, why have we never utilized that in the past for this line? Do you know, or if it was spent somewhere else?
I'm trying to find it out as of this morning.
Yeah, and without engineering had it, I understand.
But I just think from fifteen.
So eight thousand plus seventy-five hundred, you're thinking?
Yeah, more than five hundred, because, because of eight thousand dollars to run the whole year.
Eight thousand, okay.
And I understand we get money back from the abatements and other things, but still, we need to buy the stuff to do the stuff.
So what are you saying, Matt?
What am I saying? What do you mean? Yeah, I, you cut it from, you went from fifteen to five hundred.
We've never spent over sixty-five dollars, that's why. I didn't know where.
Well, I got, I talked today, and there's eight, there was eight thousand spot, and cause they bought a truck, they had maintenance on the new truck, they got two people, they hired two more people. Last year, you put the fifteen thousand dollars in there.
Yeah.
You went from a two thousand to fifteen thousand.
Yeah, I wanna find out more with the engineering team tomorrow.
Well, you can, but they would, they're not involved anymore, but okay.
You think you're gonna need help?
Yeah, absolutely.
And he's also telling you that he's taken over that, that component of that department.
The department I had, I guess, so something, this is where I get intrigued with repairs. If we repair something, ideally, you don't have that same expense the next year. Of course, there's always a rotation of repairs.
Well, I, I think going back to what chief noon said, you, you don't know what you're gonna get for parts for what they need, how long it takes to get them, and, and things like that.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
All right, next one is, uh, the ski chalet.
Uh, Jack, just a, a comment if I may, uh, just a question. Do we know the dates when the repairs were made?
I can get that. They were, they said maybe it was last April and last June. Like I said, I just took this over in January.
Sure.
And I see these, and I tried to get what I could get for information for all of yous tonight.
Yeah, uh, yeah, just to.
I think we need to find out.
I will do more tomorrow, and we will have.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, that's where I, I think it's coming from a different line we're talking about then.
No, there's two lines. There's seventy-five hundred dollar line for their materials, and this was a fifteen thousand dollar line for
A different one.
Other miscellaneous things that they needed.
Okay.
That was put in last year because they hired another, a labor for.
Oh, I see it now with you, yeah.
The labor for the carpenter.
Now, that was fifty-three?
Yep.
So now we're looking at fifty-four, ski chalet contracted services.
Well, that's mine too, if that's our ice skating rink, right?
Right, this is, I was looking to you.
All right, so that, of course, was on ARPA. I don't know exactly how much we spent to do the rink. The mayor came in with a hundred thousand. You guys are going to ten thousand. We're not done with the fiscal year yet of what's going on up there as far as ice skating is gonna end next week. So we don't know the revenue, what we got. We know we gotta have maintenance next year. We gotta buy a Zamboni. We're leasing a Zamboni right now for thirty-five hundred dollars. So there's other added stuff that we need.
This is one.
We gotta run the ice skating rink, and we just. I mean, you went from a hundred, he put a hundred, I don't see where, where do you think we can only go with ten thousand?
Uh, my, uh, thought with this was also, because we don't know the final numbers yet, was to, if the mayor was willing to staff it with, or fund it with ARPA, obviously, this was before we thought we had any discretion with that, or didn't. So this is one that I was comfortable with taking off the table, but if the council wants to deliberate too of what, what these expenses mean.
Well, I don't think right now I have the answer. I can try to get the answers, but I mean, it's one, if we just started us, it's brand new.
Yeah.
And we're not gonna do it next year, it's crazy. I mean, not saying that we can't.
And I think the confusion early on was ski chalet didn't, until the mayor met with us, we didn't know it meant ice rink either, so that was.
I'd like to just make a point that there's, there's not an unlimited ARPA fund. Like, we're at the end of the road of saying this can be funded.
The amount of times I said ARPA totaled two hundred and ten thousand dollars, so that's why.
What was that?
It was totaling about two hundred and ten thousand, is what the goal was of the ARPAs we had in mind, but I, I hear you with that too, so.
All right, we got two more, let's get to them. Fifty-six, fire employees benefit, the medical from, uh, four nine, uh, four million nine oh eight.
Uh, we're definitely discharging.
Four mil, six eighty-five.
We're definitely discharging fifty-seven. We're also discharging fifty-six, but that's because we're introducing, uh, one that we're technically not allowed to talk about yet.
The, the only thing that I'm gonna suggest that you get from the, um, the medical lines is, is please, you know, obviously, the, the departments need to be aware and, and what they budget, and they need to give an explanation as well, because I, I talked to several departments that didn't know anything about these, these amendments and, and what was, what was spent out. So I, I just, these, there, there's, and plus, we have a ton of other amendments that just got introduced, um, that I know that department heads weren't made aware of. So hopefully, again, when we reconvene tomorrow, that there are department heads here to make those, to give those explanations, um, as well.
I'm going to pass out. I have the, so one of the things with fire healthcare, if you look at our past budget, there's this weird thing where you only see like two hundred thousand dollars what was spent for fire healthcare, and police has four hundred thousand, and it was confusing, and at the bottom of the paper, you see eight million for self-insurance, and it's all lumped together. So I went to the comptroller's office, and I said, do we know what the actual number was? And they said, yes, the auditor's fixed it. And that's where I found that the actual number last year for fire healthcare was three million sixty-five thousand dollars. And then when looking at the year-to-date, uh, so far, I think we were not even at, it was like two point nine million, and I was kind of saying, hey, how far along are we with the bills? And at that point, they were all up to date as of March seventh. So we can discuss more on this tomorrow, but I'm gonna pass out what I had.
So they've got no more vouchers, is what you're saying? The comptroller's office?
There will be, of course, from March eighth through the March thirty-first, but I don't think it's gonna be one point two million more.
You think, or you know?
It's not, uh, it's not gonna be one point two. If you could prove.
You could bet your life on it?
You know, I'll say yeah.
Okay.
And that's how I'm feeling tonight.
Okay.
Uh, we have.
Sounds good.
Uh, so I'm, I'm gonna pass these out for everybody to look at, and we can have it ready for tomorrow. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like a motion to, uh, can, uh, close this meeting? We got another meeting after this. We gotta, we gotta meet now.
Yeah, we got, we're gonna start it in five minutes, five minutes, so. Our meeting right now. Six. Six.
Aiello, Burmaster, Bitar, Carcone, Irvin, Williamson, Klassimo, Testa, La Medico, Giruzzi, all present.
And Councilman Beatrice is listening. Please rise.
Joe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Brazil, stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to introduce ordinance number one.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, um, yep, city clerk, um, marriage fees, nine thousand five hundred to seventeen thousand five hundred, eight thousand dollar change. Motion to, voting or committee?
Committing.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Any opposed? Commit. Motion to introduce ordinance number two.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Second, anyone?
Second. Engineering, wages, a hundred thousand eighty-eight to eighty-five thousand eighty-eight, um, a negative fifteen thousand dollar change.
I'd like to make a motion to commit.
Second.
Any opposed? Commit. Motion to introduce ordinance number three.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Facilities repairs, forty thousand to twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollar change.
I'd like to make a motion to commit.
Second.
Got it.
Any opposed? Commit. Motion to introduce ordinance number four.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Liability insurances, four hundred and seventy-five thousand to four hundred and fifty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollar change.
I'd like to make a motion to put in committee.
Second.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Commit. Motion to introduce ordinance number two.
I'd like to make a motion.
Second, anyone?
Second. Engineering, wages, a hundred thousand eighty-eight to eighty-five thousand eighty-eight, um, a negative fifteen thousand dollar change.
I'd like to make a motion to commit.
Second. Thank you.
Any opposed? Commit. Motion to introduce ordinance number three.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Facilities repairs, forty thousand to twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollar change.
I'd like to make a motion to commit.
Second.
Got it.
Any opposed? Commit. Motion to introduce ordinance number four.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce.
Second. Thank you.
Liability insurances, four hundred and seventy-five thousand to four hundred and fifty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollar change.
I'd like to make a motion to put in committee.
Second.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Commit. Motion to introduce ordinance number five.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Liability judgments and settlements, three hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand, a two hundred thousand dollar change. Motion to commit.
I'd like to make a motion to put in committee.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Commit. Motion to introduce ordinance number six.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Second, okay. Law, salaries, six hundred and seventy-five thousand to six hundred and twenty-five thousand, a fifty thousand dollar change. Motion to commit.
I'd like to make a motion to put to committee.
You got a second?
Thank you.
Any opposed? Commit. Motion to introduce ordinance number seven.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce.
Thank you.
Motion to commit.
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, any opposed? Commit. Motion to introduce ordinance number nine.
Motion to commit.
Second.
Introduce.
Yeah, get, get, are you the motion to introduce?
Yes.
Yep.
Is there a second? Second. Thank you.
Police uniform division, salaries, nine million eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand three hundred and seven to nine million seven hundred and ninety-six thousand one hundred and fifty-four, a one hundred and one thousand one hundred and fifty-three.
Motion.
Change.
Second. Second.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, what, what is it? What is it for? I mean, I don't know.
This... Uh, this one was, okay, so when you count the police complement, the composition, we're allowed to have, we're allowed to have six lieutenants, twenty-six sergeants, and a hundred and eleven police officers. Counting this, I can give it to you guys as well, it's, we have seven lieutenant salaries listed, not everybody's filled, and we have a hundred and twelve police officers listed, we have twenty-three investigators listed. We do have twenty-five sergeants, so we're removing the three extra that the composition does not allow us to have, and we're funding the extra sergeant that we should account for, to even out and have the amount actually reflect what the composition allows for.
So, Frank, just for clarif- so, just for, so, just for clarification purposes...
We're sort of, sure.
The table of organization the council doesn't have the authority over, this is what they're, they're saying that they're, they're amending in the, in the salary line. With that said, is that our complement right now is the same complement that matches the police department, so there was a discrepancy on the salary lines, however, that's already been introduced to the Board of VNA that's been amended, however, the salary lines are minuscule and change amounts, um, for, for what needs to be changed, because there was, and I don't know where you're just getting the hundred and twelve, but I only was able to count. So, so the police depart- the police department's at the complement that, that we have listed in the table of organization.
Councilman, do you oppose?
I mean, in the, um, in the complement under the actual charter.
So you oppose this?
Yes.
So we're gonna have to have our votes then. You guys should vote. Vote to commit it.
Three nays, it's committed.
Motion to introduce ordinance number ten.
Motion.
Second. Police uniform division, social security, eight hundred and forty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars to eight hundred and thirty-four thousand four hundred and eighty-seven, a seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollar change. Motion to commit.
Motion.
Second. Any opposed?
I am opposed, and I wanna call for my vote. Deputy Chief Noonan, can you just clarify, um, in the discussions that we've had over the past, um, several days in regards to these amendments, does your complement right now, uh, match what's listed in the complement that the council passed?
So, in the table of organization that fits in the budget?
Not in the table of organization, but the complement that the council has, that, that's ordained on, on...
Yes.
Okay.
It's a hundred and sev- we have a hundred and seventy sworn officers.
Thank you.
Our complement matches that.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to add that this has the extra salaries beyond that, that's why we're making this amendment.
So we're...
But it doesn't.
To vote?
It does.
Let's go, guys.
It doesn't, Katie, it doesn't.
Count it.
She opposed.
Oh, I want.
Motion to introduce ordinance number eleven.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Police criminal investigations, salaries, four million one hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars to four million twenty-four fourteen, uh, ninety-three thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollar change.
Same for the police officers.
Motion to commit.
Motion to commit.
Second. Any opposed? Commit.
I oppose that one, same thing, ma'am.
Same thing?
Yep, call for the vote.
Okay. Have your votes, please.
Five ees committed.
I just, I also, I, I just think that, that the council also needs to understand that when you're introducing these amendments, and you're saying that there's twenty-three investigators that are listed for the composition, and per that section, the section already accounts for those number of positions that are already in there, so you're not amending the, the, the council's ordained ordinance. You're amending the table of organization, which you don't have the authority for in your rationale. So you need to realize that when you're voting on these, that your, your, your section, two dash two dash one six seven, accounts for a hundred and seventy police officers, okay? Which, he just told you he has a hundred and seventy sworn police officers, okay? So your rationale can't meet that, meet that. If you wanna say that you wanna amend the salary lines based on the reflection of, I, I don't know, but you, you're, you're, you're saying the composition, and it's not, it's not...
She has the floor, right now.
It's not that. You're, you're, he's telling you that he's at a hundred and seventy, so your salary lines, you're taking away a position for a criminal investigator, okay? You're ta- you're, you're eliminating, you're saying you're eliminating that position, but you don't have the authority to eliminate that position in the table of organization. Your authority goes by based on the complement per that section, two dash two dash one six seven. The complement matches what the police department has sworn into their department, so I just, that, that needs to be, that needs to be clarified. And again, you're, you're basing it off the table of organization, but your salary lines are going to equal out because they're not over their, their, their organization. Chief, you don't have two extra police officers in your department, do you?
We do not.
Okay, thank you.
Isn't it contractual? Anyways, having that position there?
If I may, uh...
Yeah, you may.
The, I understand that the police department isn't over, that's what's great. Nobody's losing a job, there wasn't a clerical part on, internally with that, but what our salaries are budgeted for is over what the composition allows. So while there's a hundred and seventy, we have salaries for a hundred and seventy-three people.
It's not, because you're s-
There is, and I've counted it several times.
Well, we're gonna move on to ordinance number twelve.
Cause we're down two police officers, and you were down...
No, we were down...
A sergeant, okay? So you're not at a hundred and twelve, I don't know where you're counting those and that.
It was a hundred and, so we have seven lieutenants out of six salaries, we have twenty-five...
That's the table of organization.
I'm talking salaries, so stay with it. There's seven salaries.
Table of organization is your rationale, Katie.
Samantha, louder speak, please.
We have seven, we're paying seven lieutenants right now, we're reserving the money for this, we only need to reserve money for six lieutenants. We are, uh, reserving the money for a hundred and twelve police officers, we only need to reserve it for a hundred and eleven. We're reserving it for twenty-three investigators, we only need to reserve it for twenty-two. Uh, they couldn't go over it unless we expanded the complement.
You'll see at the Board of VNA tomorrow that your salary lines match up.
Yeah, there is, uh, there is a twenty-five out of twenty-six sergeants, so we're looking to, uh, fill that appropriately, so that's where the differences are with that.
Thank you. Motion to int-
Mr. President, I apologize, may I ask, uh, the deputy chiefs just a couple of questions about this proposed amendment number eleven? Specifically, with criminal investigation, the investigators, I just wanna clarify, to the best of your knowledge, salary total, is the salary total, to the best of your knowledge, for twenty-three or twenty-two investigators? Just trying to figure this one out.
So, I don't know the salary totals.
Can we, can we possibly figure that out, just to...
It would be a question for the county clerk.
Okay.
So, you know, not to beat a dead horse, but the table of organization is new to the budget, from my understanding, never was included in the past. I think it was added there as to try and benefit the council, to see the lines. Obviously, when it was added, there was a discrepancy made. However, the question is, was the budget, the dollar amount determined prior to, based off that, off that table of organization, or was it ba- was it based off of a hundred and seventy police officers, sworn police officers?
Sure, and, and just to, to simplify with, uh, investigators, just trying to get to the bottom of if, at the end of the day, those two numbers match. Um, the total salaries allotted for criminal investigators, is it come out to twenty-two or twenty-three? Just trying to make sure that number matches up, that's all. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Motion to introduce ordinance number twelve.
Motion.
Second. Police criminal investigation, social security, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars to three hundred and fifty-two thousand five ninety, uh, seven thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollar change. Motion to commit.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Any opposed?
Yep.
Can I have your votes then?
Five ees committed.
Motion to introduce ordinance number thirteen.
Make a motion.
Second. Street lighting, electric service, one million one hundred and fifty thousand to one million one hundred and fifty thousand, change. Motion to commit.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Motion to introduce ordinance number fourteen.
Motion. Thank you.
Second. Thank you, yep. Um, departmental income, tax search fees, thirty thousand to fifty thousand, a twenty thousand dollar change. Motion to commit. Second. Any opposed?
Katie, you second? Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Any opposed? Commit.
Are we stopping at fourteen, or are we going right?
So, these were actually, um, amendments fifteen through...
H.
Um, twenty-two...
H?
H.
Yeah, twenty-three.
Amendments fifteen through H. Um, we cannot discuss tonight because it didn't account for the twenty-four hour, um, rule, so these actually have to be introduced tomorrow, otherwise we'd be in violation of open meetings law again.
Motion to adjourn.
Through H.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they have to be lettered, because there's already amendments in the packet, these are duplicates, but because they ran out of time in order to vote on them, and actually have a special meeting, and try and get everything done, um, they couldn't introduce those amendments, and that's why they're, that's why if anybody's confused of why they're lettered, um, that's because they would, they would be duplicate in the actual, um, packet.
Are you guys all set for tonight?
That is it, Mr. Giruzzi, make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second. We're good, guys. We're good, guys.